Okay, I'm ready to do the report then. Okay, I'm pleased to look at the financial and is performing as we budgeted and is good in a way. So, let's see. Okay, I'm presenting both the March and the April financial report and you can see that for the month of March, we received CTY about eleven million dollars and expenditure about ten million dollars. In fact, this is a little bit high when you see in April is four million and three point four millions for the revenue and expenditure. The reason is that we have five point six million dollars income and five point, uh, five point four million dollars expenditure that is included in the debt service because we refund some of the bonds. So, that's the reason why it's so much higher. So, usually should not have those five million dollars there. Okay, and you can see that at the end of April, we, the city received about seventy-five percent of the revenue and spent about fifty-two percent of the expenditure. So, it's good numbers. And then for General Fund, which is the largest fund for the city, for March, we have two point nine million dollars revenue and two million dollars expenditure. And for the month of April, we have one point four million dollars revenue and two million dollars expenditure. And so, you can see that at the end of April, we have a fund balance of about eleven million dollars. And looking at the expenditure for the whole up to April, seventy-one percent revenue and fifty-three percent expenditure. As you can see that April, if you look at April, it should be about fifty-eight percent. Okay, looking at property tax, you can see that most of the public tax are in already ninety-three percent, a little bit more than ninety-three percent of the public tax are paid. And for the sales tax, you can see that it's still pretty much like the budget. And April, at the end of April, we receive about fifty-eight percent of the sales tax as budgeted. Okay, looking at the three year, you can see that this is General Fund, uh, sales tax. As you know that we, the allocation has been changed for this year. So, you can see that it's much higher than the previous years. Okay, the good news is that from January to April, the State Controller's Office saying that we have twelve or thirteen percent higher than last year for April and then about seven point eight percent higher from January to April. So, are there any questions? It's a good report.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Ms. Fun. Are there any questions from the council for Ms. Fun?
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none. Is that everything? Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Fun. Moving on to the fire department update. Perry Barnum. Welcome, Mr. Barnum.
Thank you, Mayor. Council? I have a very short report for you tonight due to the fact that MedStar is going to have a much lengthier report for you because I felt like you really need to get a good report from MedStar, see where they are and where they're headed. And then along those same lines, we have a proclamation too for MedStar that I'd like to present to you. This is our first quarter report. These are our total calls for the first quarter of 2017. You can see here our total calls for each month, four and twenty-two calls, three and forty-five calls, and three and forty-two calls. Four and twenty-two calls for January, that's a pretty high number for annually, our runs. We run about forty-seven, hundred and fifty to forty-eight hundred calls annually. So, we did have a higher than normal call volume for January. In the same token, we're working through that because we change over from Firehouse to ERS at the same time. So, anytime you have a change in your RMS, you'll have some variances in your numbers. And then you look at February and March, they're pretty much right in line. You can see our EMS calls, pretty consistent, our EMS call volume, typically is about sixty-five to sixty-eight percent of our calls. Ten structure fires in January, seven in February, and ten in March. Our false alarms, pretty much similar, uh, false alarms. We work those pretty heavily to try to find out what causes those. Hazmat calls, we've had, uh, we had zero in January, but we've had nineteen in February and March. Of course, that's, that encompasses a lot of different things, our hazmat calls. And then the other calls, you can see there, were that made of the remainder of the calls. Property loss report, big number in January. Hope y'all see that. That number in January was for one fire. It was Sarah Lee. Uh, it was conveyor belt fire and, uh, our fire marshal has done some additional research on the material that's being used. Uh, it burned very, very clean, a very clean burning fire. Uh, and since, uh, that time, that fire has occurred, we changed some of our tactics, especially up there, and so is Sarah Lee. Uh, that belt that was on fire, uh, it was how they were going through to try to get that belt in service. Uh, we found it very odd how we were doing it. But the bottom line is, we put the fire out. It was a, it was a conveyor belt fire, but the true loss came from their product. They lost over a million three in product. So, uh, that was a big cost. And then February, March, I'm pretty much in line, thirty-eight thousand in February and two thousand in March. Lost alarm reports, uh, this, just to, uh, put some more highlight on that, uh, and we worked those, uh, pretty, pretty intensely. This is from our fire marshal's office, uh, total fires. This includes, obviously, it's a higher number than structure fires, but this includes car fires, uh, all other fires, not just structure fires. And then out of those thirty, there were five that were considered to be incendiary. Fire inspections, uh, complete inspections are four, four hundred and sixty-four complete inspections during, during this first quarter. There were two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight violations and two thousand five hundred corrected violations. So, that's, that's a big number for us. And we're working very, very hard in this area. Pub ed, it's another area that we're really hitting it hard. Lieutenant Derek Ward pretty much works in this area. You can see me, how many children we actually made contact with, nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-three adults, and we had sixteen events. And then in June, we have a camp coming up that I hope y'all all have a chance to come out and take a look at. It's well attended. It's, it's, it's really a good time. We, we work with the police department. We combine that camp. It's, it's good times. Smoke alarms, first quarter. There were forty-four smoke alarms installed, and this includes, like when, when the guys out make a call, they go to a house that doesn't have a smoke detector. They're actually going to put a smoke detector out there without being asked. And they'll just say, "You need a smoke detector." So, we, we didn't know. So, the guys are proactive about doing that. Uh, we'll also replace batteries. Somebody calls, they need batteries replaced, we replace their batteries for them also. And then we tested over two thousand smoke, smoke detectors in that quarter. Obviously, we're doing our apartment inspection program right now. That's where a lot of those numbers come from. And this is our mission. Uh, we, we really push our mission. Uh, we want to protect the citizens of Halton City, the bottom line. That's our job. And, uh, we hope that we achieve that on a daily basis. Council, Mayor, that's pretty much my report. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Barnum. Uh, council member, Bro.
Hey, Chief. How's the, uh, the new CAD system working out for y'all?
Well, it's come a long way. Uh, we're, we're constantly evolving that CAD. Uh, our call responses for Halton City, uh, we use MedStar. And they do a great job for us for our EMS calls. The other three cities, they have issues because they all run ambulances. So, their CAD issues are a little bit more often, more, more highlight, I guess you could say, than ours. Uh, I think we will always have CAD issues because there's human factor involved. Uh, so, we, we're every, we have a monthly meeting. We get together, we go over issues.
Okay.
Uh, so, but the CAD itself is getting more and more stable every day.
And the, the company that, uh, wrote the software has been responsive to the issues and getting them resolved?
Yes. It's Spillman is our CAD. They've been very responsive. Uh, it's, they have, they have good days and bad days, though.
Mm-hmm.
Just like any other business. Some days, they give us great responses. Other days, they, they're maybe not be as quick. Uh, but we follow up with them. We don't let them off the hook on any of those issues. So, they're, they take care of us and we make sure they do.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, council member, Bro. Uh, council member, Dunn.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like just a little more information on your hazmat calls.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they mainly, um, vehicle, um, accidents or tractor-trailer accidents or business?
Yes, ma'am. They could be all of those. And they could be a gas leak, inside gas leak, natural gas line leaking. That's considered hazardous materials call too. So, the majority of those are those calls. We really, uh, in this quarter, we had just a couple of calls where we had some fuel get on the, on the freeway, where we had to have some cleanups and stuff like that. But the majority of those calls you see there are mainly from natural gas or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, council member, Dunn. Uh, Dr. Trung.
Hi, Chief. Uh, where can I get application for the membership of MedStar? And, uh, let I, I know, I don't know you know it or not, but, uh, gentleman sitting back, how long take the application to process when the people pay you money?
The, the thing is that this year, we have completely online process. Matt, you want to come on up to the microphone?
Yeah.
This is Matt Zabatsky.
Yeah.
Who this is. He'll be able to answer your question better than I can.
And, uh, after you pay the money, how long you get the, uh, membership card or something like that?
Um, the, the good news is this year, through a lot of investment, we created a completely online application. So, you can do it from your smartphone. You can do it from your computer. Once you go through that process and it processes your payment, you're instantly a member. Um, the cards take about two to three weeks to actually get issued and printed to you. But even if you don't have the cards with you, you're registered in our system. So, if you do use the ambulance, we're going to know it literally the same day that you enroll.
Yes, sir, because, uh, I repay MedStar about two months ago.
So, you're about two months too late then, right, for a job?
Plus, you gave me the application. I didn't feel I, because I wife or my wife travel overseas. And before that, I had to went to a hospital, you know, and God, I hope I can get this guy.
Before we leave, um, I'll give you contact information. We can, we can take care of that for you.
Because a lot of people ask me, I don't know where to get them, online, right?
Yep.
MedStar.com.
MedStar nine one one dot org. There's a link right on the homepage that brings you to electronic enrollment, electronic enrollment.
Appreciate that.
And also, councilman, just to let you know, it's on the, it's on our webpage also. We have that application on our webpage. So, you can get right to it. And if anybody, any constituents have issues with that, you can call, call me and I'll get ahold of MedStar. That's my job.
Uh, council member, Dunn, did you have another question?
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
On, on the, the MedStar, um, is there an affiliation with CareFlight or?
It's not a, no, um, how are? Separate organization.
Separate. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And?
Councilman Watkins.
I think I've said this before. I've had the occasion to have MedStar out to my house once. And, uh, roughly speaking, what I was paying, it took twenty years to pay for what it would have cost for, if I'd have done it some other way. So, it was certainly worth it. It's a, it's a, it's a real value. And if you ever, if you ever have to be toted in and you haven't got it, and then you put a pencil to it, you find out that it, it, about twenty years is what, you can pay for it for about twenty years what it costs you to not have it.
Thank you, Councilman Watkins. Uh, are there any other questions for Mr. Barnum? None? All right, Mr. Barnum, we also have a proclamation for emergency medical services a week. Did you want to do that now or did you want to do that?
Uh, I can do that right now or we can go ahead and do the MedStar report. It's totally up to you, Mayor. I'm at your.
Let's do the MedStar program first.
Okay.
Okay.
And before that happens, Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could take just a moment, I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tim Watkins for, uh, going with me to get to sign our interlocal agreements. So, taking your time out of your day to go with me, that I really appreciate you doing that.
Yes, we certainly want to thank Mayor Pro Tim Watkins for filling in. I appreciate that.
And I'd like to thank you for driving me out there.
Thank you, Doug. This is Doug with MedStar.
Uh, good afternoon. I'm Doug Hooton, the CEO for MedStar. And, uh, once again, this is our annual update that we'd like to give you. And, um, I think we have a presentation?
Yep, we do.
So, um, this photo came from, uh, Back to Blue Day for, uh, with, with all your staff. So, we appreciate all of that. And we, uh, want to say a, a special thanks to our great partners, which is, uh, Perry and Brian Jacobs, who really work with us on a regular basis to, to help us improve the system, uh, and services that we deliver here in Halton City. Um, without them, it would be very difficult, um, to do. So, just take a moment to thank those guys for a job well done. Um, they have this year, and we'll talk a little bit more about this as I go through this, but we created a first responder advisory board. Uh, it was part of the new interlocal agreements that we, uh, have with the city. Um, we call it a FRAB because everything has to have an acronym. And, um, and so Perry and Brian are both, uh, participating in that FRAB. Um, that group has also developed a system performance task force, which is designed to help us develop the performance standards, uh, for the EMS system that we all enjoy. So, before, that was all done by, um, the board and, um, not necessarily as much input as we wanted from the first responders. So, now they have as much input, um, as anybody. I'd like to, we have a new team member I'd like to introduce quickly, which is, uh, Ken Simpson. Ken's our new chief operating officer. We have a picture of him. If you'd like to see a good picture of him. Um, he's from Georgia. We've encouraged him not to wear the tie, but he does anyway. And, um, and so, we're very lucky to get him. He's got a lot of experience in, uh, um, in the EMS world. And, um, I think it will help, um, help us move forward with all the things we have to do for the next, uh, coming years. So, some, uh, service enhancements, we've, uh, increased the number of units we're putting on the street. Uh, you can see from, uh, twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, we added, um, you know, roughly twenty, um, twenty-plus unit hours. Um, so, a unit hour is just an hour on the street every day. As part of the service enhancements, we, uh, have gone to an outside agency to look at our system and, um, survey our customers to see how they feel about the system. Um, this is the same system that they use in hospitals. So, if you're familiar with hospitals, press G A N E scores. So, we get exactly those same kind of scores. Um, and you can see that, um, we have a, an average score of about ninety-five point four seven, which is out of a hundred, which is pretty, pretty good. And we're prob, one of only a hundred and thirty-eight systems in the country that are doing this. So, we have now the ability to compare ourselves against systems just like ours, uh, from across, across the, the country. And, um, just, as we go through this, you can see these are some of the questions that get asked. Um, you can see, um, our score, um, as we go through this. And then we get to compare our, our scores with the total scores of everybody in the system as well as, um, similar sized, uh, systems from around the country. So, it's a great way to compare what we do and how people feel about our systems. And then a great way to take that information and improve what we do, uh, from a customer perspective every day. So, very unusual that you won't see this very well in, in many EMS systems across the country. But, um, we're very happy with, with how this has turned out. Um, so clinical improvements, um, as you know, we've been, we've been striving for, uh, train twenty-five thousand people in five years. And CPR, we're about twenty-four thousand into it now. And, uh, we've got a big CPR day coming up at the airport, uh, which will put us over this goal. So, um, this has been a lofty thing. The thing that matters the most, as we've discovered, is getting, uh, hands on the chest of people who need it. Uh, the best way to do that is to train the citizens in CPR. So, we encourage everyone to be trained in CPR. It's easy to do, takes little time, and, uh, will absolutely end up saving a life, um, if you learn it. We've updated our patient care reporting systems, um, this year. And we've gone from a version, uh, two point oh to a version three point oh for, uh, data reporting. Um, probably most important about this is it, it sort of enhances our ability to collect data. But it also allows us now to, um, work on a program to bring on the first responders onto this electronic patient care report. So, uh, we're working through that system right now on how to bring all the first responders, uh, onto this platform so that we can universally report across, um, all lines. So, if we want to report for clinical data and do more quality improvement work, uh, it will be easier to do. The, um, other side of that is we're working on how the authority, um, will pay for this system. It will not come out of the city's pockets. You mentioned, uh, computers. So, we added a new, um, CAD for us this year. Um, we use a company called Logis, L O G I S. And, um, it went live in December. Um, so, I can certainly speak to the fact that, um, it is a little choppy to get started. Um, but, uh, once it gets going, um, it smoothed out really well. And these folks, um, as Perry talked about, really support the system really well. Uh, we will be able to, uh, some point in the future, uh, if the city so chooses to, uh, interface directly with Spillman. So, um, that's one of the reasons. which will put us over this goal. So, um, this has been a lofty thing. The thing that matters the most, as we've discovered, is getting, uh, hands on the chest of people who need it. Uh, the best way to do that is to train the citizens in CPR. So we encourage everyone to be trained in CPR. It's easy to do, takes little time, and will absolutely end up saving a life, um, if you learn it. We've updated our patient care reporting systems, um, this year. And we've gone from a version two point oh to a version three point oh for data reporting. Um, probably most important about this is it, it sort of enhances our ability to collect data, but it also allows us now to, um, work on a program to bring on the first responders onto this electronic patient care report. So, uh, we're working through that system right now on how to bring all the first responders, uh, onto this platform so that we can universally report across, um, all lines. So if we want to report for clinical data and do more quality improvement work, uh, it will be easier to do. The, um, other side of that is we're working on how the authority, um, will pay for this system. It will not come out of the city's pockets. You mentioned, uh, computers. So we added a new CAD for us this year. Um, we use a company called Logis, L O G I S. And, um, it went live in December. Um, so I can certainly speak to the fact that, um, it is a little choppy to get started. Um, but, uh, once it gets going, um, it smoothed out really well. And these folks, um, as Perry talked about, really support the system really well. Uh, we will be able to, uh, some point in the future, uh, if the city so chooses, to, uh, interface directly with Spillman. So, um, that's one of the reasons we decided to do this. So as, uh, as you guys consider things in the future, that's one of the enhancements to the system that would be beneficial for everyone, I think. Um, we did get the interlocal in ordnance, um, done. That was about a seven-year project, um, to get completed. And, um, I am, uh, pleased to announce that, um, it's all approved by every city and been signed. And, uh, we're so appreciative of that. Um, some of the stuff that was in this interlocal, and the reason it was necessary, it was thirty years old when we updated it. So you can imagine, there were a lot of things that have happened over the thirty years that, uh, needed to be expressed in the interlocal. So, so that is updated for everything that we do and, and into the foreseeable future to allow the authority to be as efficient as it possibly can. Um, one of the things is it does ease the entry into the authority. So if other cities would like to become part of the authority, um, there used to be a pretty good financial barrier to get into the authority. Um, that has been, um, I wouldn't say eliminated, but it's been put to the discretion of the Authority Board, um, where all of the cities that are currently part of this are equity owners of the authority. So you own the authority. Um, the folks that come in in the future, the, in the, in the future will not be equity owners. So, so they will still be part of the authority, but they won't have the equity stake that the current cities have. Um, get better alignment with, uh, the, um, Emergency Physician Advisory Board. So we have an advisory board that does that. There's always been this sort of little bit of a disconnect, uh, between, uh, the authority and the, uh, advisory board. So that has been, um, realigned to make sure that those things sync up better. Um, and it did, we did create the, uh, First Responder Advisory Board, which we talked about. Um, this gives all the first responders a say in what goes on. There's, uh, two ex officio fire department members that are on our board now that were not there before. Uh, one represents the member cities, and the other represents Fort Worth. So both of those are represented on our board. So our mobile upgraded healthcare stuff is still going on. And, um, as you can see, we had ninety-one Holton City residents enrolled in these programs. These were the high utilizers and, um, Ops-Admit and those kind of programs, as well as thirteen of your, uh, citizens went through the, uh, the, uh, nurse triage programs and got alternative destinations. So they called expecting to get an ambulance to emergency room. What they got was, um, help, and then they got, um, something to someplace other than an emergency room by ambulance. Um, and again, they get surveyed, and, uh, those folks were very, very pleased with the outcomes, uh, of what they got, because what they didn't get was a large ambulance bill and a large emergency room bill to go along with it. They got something that was more appropriate for their care. Response times are always important. And, uh, with the new CAD, things of, uh, you can see when you get a new CAD, things sort of go up and down, and we're beginning to see that smoothed out again, uh, for Priority One. Uh, one other thing about response times is with the new CAD, um, we used to start the clock for response times, um, after we went through a whole triage program. So we would ask a bunch of questions, and then the ambulance would get dispatched, and that's when the response times would start. Um, since the new CAD started in December, we now start from the second they pick up the phone. So it looks at it sort of from the customer's perspective. You don't really care about anything else other than when you, you call nine one one, how long did it take for somebody to arrive? Right? And so we're now measuring that, which is about two, two and a half minutes earlier, uh, than it was, uh, during we had these times last year. So you're gonna see some, some motion in this, which is relative to just when we start the clock, um, from that. And that was done specifically, um, to make sure that we're meeting our customers' needs. And Priority Two. Um, it's always nice to get awards, and we were awarded the National Safety Council, uh, Texas DOT Safety Award for this last year. It's the second year in a row we've gotten this award. Um, this is specifically for our drivers' training programs and our drivers' monitoring programs. We use DriveCam, um, a version of DriveCam in our, um, our ambulances, which helps us monitor what they do on a day-to-day basis, which we can then turn into educational formats for them to reduce our, um, collision rates and incident rates. So we have one of the lowest incident rates in the industry currently because of this program. Our medical director, Dr. Richmond, was, uh, um, recognized as Medical Director of the Year this last year. So we're very pleased about that as well. Uh, you mentioned the Star, Star Care Program. So we have, uh, spent a lot of time and energy this year on, on, um, putting together a program to roll that out and try to get it out to more and more people. To your points, um, earlier, this is a program that really does save people money. Um, I know a lot of people think they'll never need an ambulance, but we meet about three hundred and fifty of those people a day who thought they never would. Right? So the little bit of money that they spend for this, um, easily pays for itself because an ambulance bill's about fifteen hundred dollars. So you can see, and this covers everyone in your household. So, um, we encourage people to do, to, to be part of the Star Care, um, family. And, um, that's sort of what it looks like. So that's a pretty quick overview. Um, I'll take questions. And, um, we left you, um, this year's update. It's on a brochure, looks like this. And inside of it is the Star Care application.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions, uh, from the council regarding this presentation? Uh, Mr. Bynum, did you have any?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you have anything you would like to add to the presentation regarding, uh, workability and from your, uh, department's, uh, standpoint?
Well, with our, our partnership with MedStar, uh, we've come a long way. Uh, right now, with our partnership with MedStar, I mean, I wouldn't want replacement at this point. MedStar, their, their level of service is here, and our customer service that they provide to the citizens of Holton City is here. So, uh, I applaud them every day. Uh, they're not perfect, we're not perfect, but at the end of the day, they do an awesome job.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Hooton, for everything you did, and MedStar as well.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Bynum, did you want to do the proclamation now, or did you want to wait?
That'd be great, Mayor, if you'd like me to do proclamation.
Fantastic. Absolutely.
Would you like to receive a proclamation?
I would.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This proclamation, uh, establishes EMS, uh, Week to designate the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Holton City. Whereas, Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury prevention, and is, and is evolving its role and important member of the healthcare community. And whereas, personnel from MedStar, radio organization, Holton City Fire, and Holton City Police Department, thank you, Chief Phillips, for being here tonight, stand ready to provide compassionate, life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, Emergency Medical Service responders are supported by Emergency Medical Dispatchers, educators, administrators, researchers, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas, members of EMS teams, both career and volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training, continued education, enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of EMS practitioners by designating EMS Medical Services Week now. Therefore, Mayor David Everett, Mayor of Holton City, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through twenty, the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen, as Emergency Medical Services Week with a theme EMS Strong, Always in Service, in the City of Holton City, and encourage the community to observe the week with the program, programs, ceremonies, and activities. I'm very proud to office. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the time, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, that wraps up our work session. At, uh, six thirty-five, we will now adjourn and we'll reconvene at seven P M.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our May 15, 2017 City Council Meeting. Time now is 7:04. First item on the agenda is the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Paul Tim Watkins. Will you please stand?
Yes, sir. This evening, David Stapp, he's a Stevens Minister at St. Luke United Methodist Church, will offer the prayer.
Mayor, council members, let us pray. Amen, fathers. We come tonight to this meeting, we ask that you be with our council members as we go forward through our very busy, growing city. Lord, we also ask that you keep our leaders up in the White House, that they'll keep our soldiers and Navy out of harm's way. We ask that you be with our fire department, our police department, for, Lord, they lay their lives on the line every, each and every day to make our city and keep us safe. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you for that. Uh, moving on, uh, if you're looking at your agenda, the proclamation has already been, has already been, uh, presented in the, uh, works, uh, work session, as have the, uh, reports. So we'll now move to the announcements and events by our city secretary, Arby Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. Announcements in the way of May fifteenth, twenty seventeen. With the public library, we have storytime, GED classes, super science Saturdays, bilingual storytime, and coloring and cookies for grownups and family movie night activities are all listed on the library's website for the dates and times. Ladies Night Out is coming on Saturday, August the twelfth, from five thirty to nine thirty. If you purchase your ticket by June seventeenth, the price is thirty-nine dollars. After June seventeenth, the price goes to forty-five dollars. It Can Wait is a virtual reality simulator sponsored by AT&T and will allow you to experience what it's like to text and search while driving. It'll be held at the library on May nineteenth from eleven AM to five PM. The Harden City, Haltem City Garden Club Plant Swap Sale and Workshop will be held Saturday, May twentieth, from ten AM to two PM. The Teen Advisory Board is, is meets on the last Wednesday of each month at four PM, and the next meeting is May thirty-first. The Sing-Along Afternoon is held Monday, June the twelfth at two PM, with lyrics and popcorn provided and the musical Singing in the Rain. The Surt Water Drive will be held on Saturday, June third, in the rear parking of the central fire station from nine AM to one PM, so please help our fire department by donating bottled water. In community projects, there are still, year twenty seventeen Haltem City Community Counters are still available at City Hall, the Public Library, and the Recreation Center. And if you entered a photo, the images of Haltem City Photo Contest, please stop by the rec center to pick up, pick it up before this Friday, May the nineteenth. Registration for Super Kids Summer Camp at the Haltem Recreation Center has opened, but there is very limited space in this super camp for the summer, so be sure to register early. Camp is open to boys and girls ages six to thirteen. Kids will have a great time playing games, doing arts and crafts, attending sports camps, outdoor activities, and field trips. Lunch and snacks are included, and the cost is one hundred dollars per week, plus a twenty-five dollar non-refundable deposit. And the camp will run from June the fifth through August eleventh. The Bowman Sports will host a weekly sports camp at the Recreation Center, starting the week of June the fifth. Camps are held from one to four PM, Monday through Thursday, at the rec center, and the cost is only sixty dollars per week, and the sports offered includes dodgeball, basketball, and speed sports. For a schedule, you can check the city's website or contact the rec center at eight one seven, eight three one, sixty-four, sixty-four. Tomorrow, the Haltem Senior, Haltem City Senior Center is having their fortieth anniversary celebration from eleven AM to one o'clock tomorrow there at the center. And they are also hosting a Burgers and Bingo this Friday, May nineteenth, from, at six thirty, for a cost of twenty-five dollars. The grand prize will be a fifty-dollar flat-screen television, and ten games of bingo will be played for prizes valued from fifty dollars to one hundred dollars. In addition, a silent auction and bake sale will also be held, and the proceeds will benefit Friends Helping Friends Social Transportation Incorporated. You can call eight one seven, eight three four, eight zero twenty-one for tickets and information. And that concludes our announcements for today.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, consisting of items number two, I'm sorry, items number three and four. Does the council have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay, seeing now, we're, we are now in line for a motion. Dr. Trong?
Man, council, I want to make a move to approve item number three and number four. Number three, minutes on, uh, April twenty-four, two thousand and seventeen, and number four, honors number O dot two zero one seven, dot zero one five, dot fifteen.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, is there a second? Uh, Councilmember Grove?
I'll be for a second.
Okay, thank you. Motion. We have a, a motion for approval in a second. If you would, please, uh, signify your votes. Okay, a motion passes, uh, with Councilmember Fowler being absent. Did it vote? My mistake. Okay, I thought it voted. Okay. Councilmember Watkins? Okay. Motion passes with Councilmember Fowler being absent. Uh, if you're looking at your, uh, at your agenda, we're going to move it, agenda items number nine and ten, which is a resolution, uh, number R dash two oh one seven dash oh one four dash oh one, and also the oath of office, which is agenda item number ten, up to, uh, ahead of agenda item number five. So, council, uh, councilmembers nine, Grove, Dr. Trong? We'll have to do it first? Okay, well, I guess we'll do that first then. Okay, my mistake. Okay, so. Number nine, consideration and, okay.
Council, uh, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash four, dash oh one four, dash oh one is, uh, consideration or can, or and or action regarding approval of the resolution. Uh, tabulating canvassing the results of the May sixth, twenty seventeen, general and special elections, and, uh, because of the results, ordering a runoff to be held on June tenth, twenty seventeen, as with the contract with Tarrant County. So, uh, council has been given the resolution and the votes. Very quickly, I'm just going to read the total votes that were given. Uh, for mayor, uh, Mayor David Avery, running unopposed, received six hundred and eighty-nine votes. Uh, place one, Janine Run, Janine Nun, Janine Hall Nun, running unopposed, received six hundred and fifty-eight votes. In place two, we had a candidate race between Brent Weest and Walter Grove. Brent received three hundred and sixty-one votes, Walter Grove received five hundred and thirty-eight votes. In place seven, Dr. Trong ran under, unopposed, and received six hundred and eighty-eight votes. In the special election, the following candidates received these votes. Carolina DeLeon received fifty votes. Linda Lynn Thompson received two hundred and ninety votes, two hundred and ninety-five votes. Ricky Brown received three hundred and fifty-two votes, Troy Dunn received one hundred and eighteen votes, and Willis Odell received one hundred and sixty-eight votes. And so we have a situation here where, uh, section two on the, is, uh, on the resolution states, uh, total number of votes cast during absentee voting was fifteen. Early voting was six hundred and eighty-five. Three hundred and eight votes were cast on election day for a total number of one thousand and eight votes. And from the results of the election, David Avery is hereby declared to have been elected office of mayor. Janine Nun is hereby declared to be elected to the office of council member place one. Walter Grove is hereby declared to have been elected to office of council member place two. And Antrong is hereby declared to have been elected to the office of council member place seven. And that now that there was no candidate that received the required majority vote to be elected to the office of council place six, the city council is now to certify that Ricky Brown and Linda Lynn Thompson are the candidates who received the highest and second highest number of votes in the main election, and hereby can order the names of Ricky Brown and Linda Thompson to be placed on the ballot for the office of council member place six to be determined by runoff election pursuant to resolution twenty seventeen dash oh oh one, dash oh one, which was the election, uh, calling the general election back in January. So, uh, you do have it that a runoff election is hereby called to elect city council place six to serve until May twenty eighteen or, or until a successor duly elected and qualified. The election shall take place on the tenth of June, between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. All city, uh, Haltem City precincts will be allowed to vote at the Haltem Northeast Center. Uh, the date's listed here for early voting, starts Monday, May the twenty-ninth, and will end on Tuesday, June sixth, with various times that will be able to be found on the website. So, Mayor, this resolution is hereby offered up to the city council for approval.
Thank you, Mr. City Secretary. Uh, we have a motion for, uh, consideration. Uh, Councilmember Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, move that we approve resolution R dash twenty seventeen dash zero one four dash zero one, the canvassing of May sixth, twenty seventeen, general and special election results.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval. Uh, is there a second?
Councilmember Garrett, would you mind also order to include the ordering of runoff?
Yes, as part of the motion, I'd like to include the ordering of the runoff.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Grove?
That's for a second.
Have a motion for approval in a second. Uh, council, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. So now we can go to agenda item number ten, which is administering of the oaths of office. So, councilmembers nine, Grove, and Dr. Trong, if you would, please meet me down front. Oh, yes. Our municipal judge, Lorraine Erby, will be administering the oaths.
I state your name.
I, David Avery.
I, Janine Nun.
I, Walter Grove.
I, Dan Trong.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will?
That I will.
Faithfully execute?
Faithfully execute.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of Haltem City Council?
Of Haltem City Council.
Place?
Place one.
Place two.
Lake.
Seven.
And your name.
Mayor.
Thank you. Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will?
And will.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. We please stand and, and please honor your oath. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, the city secretary, am going to give, uh, Mayor Avery his certification of the, of the election. So, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that as a result of the general election held of May sixth, twenty seventeen, David Avery was duly elected mayor of Haltem City. Mayor, here's your certification.
I would like to present councilmembers nine, Grove, and Dr. Trong with their certifications. This reads, in the name and by the authoris, the authority of the state of Texas, this is, this is to certify that as a result of the general election held, May sixth, two thousand and seventeen, Janine Nun, Janine Hall Nun was duly elected as city council place one. This is, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that is, as a result of the general election held, May sixth, two thousand and seventeen, Walter Grove was duly elected as place two of the Haltem City Council. Congratulations. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that as a result of the general election held, May sixth, two thousand and seventeen, Dr. Antrong was duly elected as council member place seven.
Mayor, before we go any further, I do want to make, uh, a note that I did mention earlier that Monday, the, the May twenty-ninth was the first day for early voting. They are not voting on Monday, May twenty-ninth, because that is Memorial Day. So, early voting starts Tuesday, May thirtieth. Yeah, it starts on Tuesday, right, not on Monday. There are not going to be any early voting on Monday because of the holiday.
Early voting starts Tuesday, May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, right.
Before we continue on with our, uh, agenda, I would like to offer the, the councilmembers an opportunity to, to make some statements. Ms. Nun, would you like to?
I didn't expect this, but I'll be glad to. This is exciting to be in my, my, uh, my second term. First term, it took a lot of studying and, um, really getting into it because it's all new, and I feel like I have a pretty good grasp this time of everything that's going on, and I really look forward to serving the citizens, um, for the next two years. There's going to be some exciting things going on in Haltem City. I would, uh, I have to mention the Veterans Memorial Park, um, or I would not be doing my duty. And, uh, it's going to be wonderful, and I really hope everybody, um, supports it and, uh, continues to, to support Haltem City and all the things that we're trying to do to, um, to enhance and grow our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nun. Councilmember Grove?
I just want, would like to thank the voters that came out and voted, um, during this race. It's them that, you know, put us here, uh, so that we could do what's right for the city, and appreciate all the feedback that we get. Also like to thank my wife and my kids for helping me out in this campaign, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grove. Uh, Dr. Trong?
I would like to say thanks to all voters in Haltem City that trust me what I have been done the last four years, so you don't send an opponent to run against me, so I can stay home and enjoy. I don't have to run out there like Rick and Linda. And, uh, one more time, you know, we have the best panel, council, and the mayor, and we will continue to go through the path that we have been done. But we have many goals we need to finish in the future, one more time. Thank you, everyone, and good luck to Linda and Rick for the next runoff, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Trong. While serving in elective office, I think we can all agree up here that we do miss a lot of family time. And I want to thank my wife, Lisa, my kids, Joshua and Chloe, who are here in the audience with me tonight, for your continued encouragement and support, not only over the past two years while serving as mayor, but since we all began this journey back in two thousand and ten. This is our fifth election, and I'm very, your, your support has never wavered, and for that, I thank each of you. I'm grateful to continue working with this council and staff that over the past few years, although we haven't always agreed, undoubtedly, we had the best interest of our community at the forefront of every decision that was made. And I'm also encouraged by the promising opportunities that lie ahead. As I've said many times while serving as city council member and also as mayor, that we have made much forward progress in our, in our best days truly do lay ahead of us. And also, while traveling through our community, I, I'm reminded about what it takes to make our city great. It's clearly our people. We are truly a kaleidoscope of diversity, and that should always be one of our greatest strengths. To build a community of opportunity, it will take the citizen's support of our city government. As I strongly believe in the future, the future of Haltem City will be shaped by our caring citizens and not by our politicians. And finally, it's an honor and privilege to serve as mayor, and I want to thank the voters for allowing me the opportunity to continue serving the city that I love. Thank you. And after, yes, sir, Dr. Trong?
Uh, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce you my wife, because she's a small girl, and I, I didn't see well enough. That's Lily.
And after the meeting, there will be refreshments and snacks out in the hallway. Uh, if you're looking at your agenda, we're continuing on with agenda item number five, which is bid number B dash two oh one seven, dash three one one, dash oh two, Montreal Circle Street Reconstruction. Mr. Van Unus, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
The item before you, staff would like for y'all to award a construction contract for the reconstruction of Montreal Circle. Montreal Circle is indicated on the screen. It's approximately 1,000 feet, and it stretches from Vicky Street to Denton Highway. The project includes the replacement of the water sewer and replacing the asphalt street with a concrete street, concrete curb and gutters. There were four bids for this project. The bid opening was April 26, 2017. The low bidder on this project was to Bill and Win. Their bid with sidewalks was $760,297.25. Staff has worked with this firm in the past. They've done quite a few projects in Holtham City. I think most recently, the north end of Holtham Road, just immediately south of Western Center Boulevard. They've been, their work has been in compliance with the contract documents and come in at or under budget and within the construction time. The project includes about $444,000 worth of paving and drainage, $316,000 worth of water and sewer. Both amounts are well within our fiscal budget. Therefore, staff would recommend that council award a contract to Stabil and Win in the amount of $760,297.25. And again, that is with sidewalks. If council opts not to have sidewalks, then that amount would be $708,770.75. The sidewalks are proposed to be five foot and at the back of curb, which is just very recently where council has deemed the appropriate place to install sidewalks when they need to be installed on residential streets.
Thank you. Mr. Van Nuenius, are there any questions from the council for Mr. Van Nuenius? Councilmember Nun?
Thank you, Mayor. Are there sidewalks now in that area?
Only one lot has sidewalks. It's the most northeast lot on the project. It would actually, or northwest, it would actually be the southwest corner of Vicky and Montreal. That corner lot does have a little bit of sidewalk during its, along its frontage, along Montreal Circle. Otherwise, the street has no sidewalks. So if you do opt to go without sidewalks, I do think it would be appropriate to at least replace those sidewalks that are there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garrett?
So, you're suggesting it's just one lot that has sidewalks, and you suggest we'd replace just that one lot with sidewalks?
No, my suggestion is that the whole project gets sidewalks.
Okay, why?
Yeah, I think it makes a much more walkable community. I think that's desirable for younger couples moving into the city. I think that's what we're trying to attract. I just think it makes it an all-around neighborhood. You get to know your neighbors. I think it's a much better residential area.
Well, I mean, just too many of our neighborhoods, and I think this is one of them, I used to live on Jerry. I mean, it's, you put sidewalks in, and a lot of times you see cars parked across the driveways where if you're walking on a sidewalk, you come to a driveway, you've got to step out into the street anyway to go around the cars that are parked there. I mean, the streets aren't that wide, and the lots aren't that wide. And then as you cut into the roads to put more sidewalks in, then that just cuts the space, you know what I mean? The cars hang out further from the house, so I don't, I don't know that we need to spend money on sidewalks that... I understand what you're saying, it's more walkable space and that sort of thing, but you're also cutting into people's yards and reducing the space they have to park.
Understood, and that's why we bid it out both ways to give council the opportunity to award it in a manner they thought most appropriate.
I mean, just for me, I don't know what the council would think, but I mean, I don't think we need to go with sidewalks unless around schools and that sort of thing. I can understand it, but this isn't around a school really so much, so I wouldn't think so. It's just my own opinion.
Will you refresh my memory, Greg? Vicky, it has sidewalks or no?
It does not. Vicky is coming up for reconstruction as well. However, that's a fairly extensive street, and the design is, I say nowhere close to being done. And even if it was being done, I would like to have Montreal finished. I would, I certainly don't want to inconvenience those neighbors even worse. So that project will not go out to bid until after Montreal's done.
Uh, Dr. Tron?
I believe this area, the traffic very slow, right?
Yes, sir.
And without a sidewalk, what the project will be cost, you know, how much we save the money if without sidewalk?
There is about $52,000 in savings without sidewalks.
Because I, Councilman Garrett said, you know, this area, I don't think we need the sidewalk at all because I don't see the traffic, you know, like school around there or something like this, or the market or something like this. But my feeling like we don't need sidewalk on this street.
Thank you, Dr. Tron. Councilmember Grow?
Greg, have we received any feedback from the residents other, from Montreal, other than the fact that their street needs to be repaired regarding the sidewalks?
No, I guess the history on Montreal is even before I was hired, this project was conceived to be a community development block grant project, which is the next item on the agenda. However, when it came up to be funded with CDBG HUD funds, the census had changed, and the area was no longer within an area that CDBG funds target, so we couldn't use that money there. So, we tried finding other alternatives to get this project funded, and it just so happened that we were able to do that a couple of years later, now being the time. So, all we've heard is that the residents want their street reconstructed.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Councilmember Watkins?
Yes, excuse me. Councilmember Grow asked a question. One of the things I was going to ask if the neighbors have been polled on what they think. Everybody in the world that's ever seen a council meeting knows what I think about sidewalks anyway. And on a, in this particular instance, I just, I can't see, it's almost like a sidewalk to nowhere. There's not anybody going to be cutting through that neighborhood. And $50,000 is not a lot of money out of 76, 760, but it's, it just seems to me that it's not needed in that, in that particular instance. Another point, I find it interesting that after, ever how many, I'm ready to talk about you, you quit talking, dinner. After all these years of us disagreeing on things, here are the last couple of three meetings, I don't, why are you leaving about the time we started agreeing or something?
That's why I'm leaving, Mom. That was, I've been waiting all these years. I said, as soon as I start agreeing with Bob, I'm out of here.
Thank you, Councilmember Watkins. Councilmember Nun?
Thank you. If we don't put the sidewalks in, can we widen the street?
Um, no, they would have to go back to design. The street only has 50 footer right away. And I don't know as short as it is that it needs to be widened much more than our standard residential street. My guess is that's something that the residents might be against.
Okay, I just, you know, I live on Ira, and it's a nice wide street, and we don't have sidewalks. So, you know, it's, that's really nice because it is so wide, so I just wondered. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Garrett?
Yeah, Mayor, I just did want to say thank you to the staff for taking bids both ways to give us an idea of what it is with sidewalks and without. That's good information. Appreciate it.
Well, we are now in line for a motion. Uh, Councilmember Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we approve bid 2017-311-02 to go with Stabil and Win without sidewalks.
Okay, motion for approval without sidewalks. Is there a second? Councilmember Grow?
I'll have you for a second.
Okay, motion for approval in a second. If you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council, and Mr. Van Nuenius. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Resolution Number R-2017-015-11.
Okay, this item is relative to the city CDBG funds, which are community development block grant funds through the Housing and Urban Development Federal Agency. This is our 42nd year of funds. We will receive approximately 154,000 in funds. This year's project was identified probably about a year or so ago. It's the replacement of existing two-inch water main on Mini Street between Hollis Street and Northeast 28th Street with a six-inch water main. Uh, the main reason for upsizing this water main is with only a two-inch water main, we can't serve those residents with fire hydrants. So, being that CDBG funding is steadily decreasing over the years, it's been harder and harder to find projects. Utility projects seem to fit very well within the budgeted amounts. And so, working with the fire department, we've located some street areas that would probably be a good idea to replace the existing two-inch lines with six-inch lines. And this project came up, it kind of fit the amount of money that the city was receiving. So having said that, the council approved a resolution. Tarrant County hired an engineering firm. The bid opening for this project was on April 19. They did receive eight bids, so quite a bit of interest. The low bidder was a firm by the name of LKG Resources, and their total amount bid was $173,072. That leaves a balance of around $18,000. We do have that amount budgeted in our current CIP budget. Staff doesn't have any familiarity with LKG Resources. However, the gentleman that we deal with from the county, he has dealt with this firm in the past, spoke very highly of them. Our engineering firm contacted the town of Cedar Hill, which has also used this firm. They also spoke very highly of them, so we're fairly confident they can do a good job. So, having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there are no questions, I would ask council to approve the resolution recommending LKG Resources get the project for $173,072. The way it works, if you do approve this resolution, it gets sent off to Tarrant County. They schedule it for Commissioner's Court. That would probably be two to three weeks from now, so I don't anticipate construction beginning on this project until bid to maybe even late July, depending on when Tarrant County staff gets it on their commissioner's agenda.
Thank you, Greg. Councilmember Grow?
Hey, Greg, with the increased, I guess, water volumes going from the two-inch pipe to the six-inch pipe, is that going to help with the insurance in that area?
Yes, it should, now that that area has fire hydrants, that, if those homeowners will contact their insurance companies upon completion of the project, yes, that should be a benefit to them. They should be able to see a reduction in their homeowner's insurance.
I'm sure they'll like that. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Are there any other questions for Greg from council? Seeing none, we are now in line for a motion. Uh, Councilmember Grow?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve Resolution Romeo dash zero, correction, Romeo dash 2017 dash 015 dash 11 for the bid with LKG Resources Limited for the bid amount. That's noted.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion for approval. Councilmember Nun?
Thank you. That's for a second.
Okay. Greg, is the motion as stated, is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion for approval in a second. Council, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Resolution Number R-2017-016-03. Ms. Fang, welcome.
Mayor and the city council, this agenda item is a resolution to approve the Atmos Energy Company's rate increase. Um, as you know, that the city, along with the other 170 cities, is a member of the Atmos Cities Steering Committee. This committee, we will the rate increase request for the cities. On March 1st, 2017, Atmos made a filing requesting about $57.4 million of revenue increase and not including City of Dallas, that requests $46.4 million increase. And with the negotiation with Atmos and also the Atmos Cities Steering Committee, and it is agreed that we should approve the increase with $38.8 million for Atmos. And the rate increase will be effective June 1st, 2017. The financial impact for residents are that residential customers will have, will see a 3.87% average increase. And for commercial customer, the increase is about 2.37%. Since this negotiation of the rate is for 170 cities, and the committee decided that this is a fair increase. So, we will ask the council to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Fang. Are there any questions for Ms. Fang? Dr. Tron?
Ms. Fang, is this renewable negotiation yearly or what time period?
Well, they requested in March 1st, and so the committee's been working with the company since then. And I think that they just gave us the approval maybe two weeks ago.
Okay, but they have to do it again every year?
They do it every year.
Every year, okay. That's my question. Thank you.
And since 2007, we've been doing it every year.
Thank you, Dr. Tron. Are there any other questions from the council for Ms. Fang? Seeing none, we are now in line for a motion. Thank you, Ms. Fang. Uh, Dr. Tron?
May I go ahead to make a move to approve Resolution Number R-2017-016-03? For approval, the negotiated rate settlement resolving the 2017 RRM filing and implementing the rate change.
Thank you, Dr. Tron. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Councilmember Grow?
I'll ask for a second.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval in a second. Council, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council members. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Agreement with Tarrant County for Tax Collections.
Okay, this, this agenda item is again an annual, annual event. So, we have contracted the Tarrant County Tax Office to collect the tax bill for Holtham City. And currently, the rate is 95 cents per account. And for the coming year, tax year 2017, it will be 98 cents per account. And we have about 58,000 accounts with the tax office. And so, our budget for next year will be 56,840,000. So, and again, this is every year we have to renew it, and every year we have a new rate. So, I would ask the council to approve this item as well.
Thank you, Ms. Fang. Are there any questions from the council for Ms. Fang? Councilmember Grow?
Have we looked at anybody else that would do this?
You mean the other cities?
Yeah, well, no, well, no, but other organizations other than Tarrant County doing it? Are there third-party businesses that do this type of work?
No, there is no other, yeah.
So, Tarrant County has a monopoly on it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Years ago, we should do our own.
Well, yeah, years ago, we do it. Oh, since 1993, we have contracted the tax office to do that because they will build the school district, the county, and all other entity. On your tax bill, you can see all those.
Yeah, I see all three of them, yep. And so, does the other taxing agencies pony up money to Tarrant County for that service also?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I believe it was prior to '93, we did our own in-house, and so did BISD. They did theirs as well.
Right.
I believe '93, '94, sometime along, and there's when the, when the change happened, yeah.
Uh, are there any other questions for Ms. Fang from the council? Okay, seeing none, we are now in line for a motion. Councilmember Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, do we have a... There is no resolution number, right?
No.
All right, just move that we approve the Advo Arm Tax Assessing, Billing, Collecting, Reporting for 27, 2017 tax year with the Tarrant County Tax Office.
Thank you. And is the motion as stated, is that sufficient, Ms. Fang?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Dr. Tron?
I'll move for a second.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval in a second. Council, if you would, please signify your votes. Uh, motion passes unanimous. Thank you. So, moving on, we've already completed Agenda Items Number Nine and Ten. Uh, this is now the visitors and citizens forum. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to resignation of board members. I didn't see any appointments or reappointments. Councilman Watkins, did you have a question?
Yes, I didn't know it was going to happen. I'm not sure if I can announce when I like it. I probably, probably could have been better with the citizens, you know.
He can, he can do it now if you'd like.
Yes, I, I know that we're going to announce it on the 22nd, but I thought in case somebody was watching tonight that wasn't watching on the 22nd, that he would announce the ceremony down at the cemetery on the 29th.
Yes, in fact, we do have, I need to make a prior announcement that because of the rescheduling for the canvassing of the votes that we had tonight, we will have a city council meeting next Monday, the 22nd, but we will not have one on the 29th, because that is a holiday. So, there is a city council meeting next Monday at 7:00, and then there is no meeting on the 29th. And as Mayor Protem Watkins said, there is a memorial service that is going to be held by the American Legion to be working with them, and to be, I think also the Veteran Four Awards, but it's going to be, I believe it's at 9:00, as usually, I think, the usual time that they do down at the.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM at the cemetery, and I cannot think of the name of the cemetery, but it's the one on Belt, on 28th Street and Beach, 28th Street and Beach. And we will have a full announcement on that at the next meeting, but I do want the citizens to understand, to know that there is going to be a memorial service that all citizens can, are invited to partake.
Thank you. Since we don't have any appointments or board member, Board of Commissions, we do have an absent T. Can we, can we do it then if we don't have it listed? Excuse an absent?
I'll listen.
We don't have it listed on the agenda?
Yeah, here are the schedules.
Okay, so we're good? Okay, well, with that being said, we have no executive session, so we will now adjourn at 7:47.
I have a question for the city council.
Yes, sir.
We have a sign outside that says you can actually go to different places.